Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Monday, February 8th, 2016. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein is absent. Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Vieira.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Mr. Britton followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we're so thankful, Father, for the many blessings we enjoy. We're especially thankful for the opportunity to live in this great country and the freedom it provides us. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to govern ourselves and we ask for thy Spirit to be with the council members this night that they might make decisions that are pleasing to thee and care for the citizens of Series. We ask that you bless all those that are employed here that they might be safe in carrying out their duties and we dedicate ourselves to thee and we say this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
This evening, we have one presentation declaring February 2016 as African-American History Month. I know Mr. Frank Johnson is here to accept the proclamation, so let me go ahead and read it first. Proclamation declaring February 2016 African-American History Month. Whereas African-Americans have played a central role in our nation's history, but for far too long historians ignored or glossed over their contributions and the injustices that they have suffered. The origins of Black History Month can be traced to the scholar Carter G. Woodson, who in 1926 conceived a yearly celebration to help certify, excuse me, to help rectify the omission of African-Americans from history books. Today, the observance of African-American History Month throughout the United States stands as testament to the success of Woodson's project and the example of how we can work together to make the teaching of history more honest. And whereas over the past century, African-American life, history, and culture have become major forces in the United States and in the world, and in 1915, few could have imagined that African-Americans in music, art, and literature would become appreciated by the global community. Fewer still could have predicted the prominence achieved by African-Americans as well as other people of African descent in shaping world politics, war, and diplomacy. A century later, few can deny the centrality of African-Americans in the making of American history and this month, we celebrate their contributions. Now therefore, I Chris Vieira, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim February 2016 as African-American History Month and urge all citizens, public officials, educators, and librarians to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Next, we will move to citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth and state your name.
Leonard Shepard, 2841 Fowler Road, Series, California, and guess what? We've had rain and now we have green grass weeds everywhere. And I see them all over and people aren't taking advantage of this wonderful cool instead of really hot like the summertime and getting rid of those weeds before they become a firehazard. I will say, though, that the little church on Mitchell, they had a probably an acre or more of weeds and they've been working at it and now it's down to where it can be mowed or whatever else they can, they want to do with it before the hot time sets in. So I hope everybody else that's got a whole yard full of weeds and green grass that they don't intend to mow or water or take care of, they take care of it now because within just a few short weeks, it can be dead and dying and turning brown and especially since the days that we've been having the last few and the few to come are in the seventies, that's a, that's May and June weather and here it is February. So we don't know what El Nino is going to give us or anything else, so we need to think about taking care of things like that way in advance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Wes Stamper, 1625 Linden Drive. I have a couple of items that I'd like to bring forth tonight. I'd first like to start off by thanking the council. I'm kind of new to being involved in the community, but from what I've seen over the last couple of years, you guys have done a great job. From what I've seen as well, you guys really do care about what the community has to say and keep those in mind in your guys' decisions, so I thank you for that. So I'd like to start off on the topic of sports practices in our sports, in our public parks. I'm not sure if something is in place, what jurisdiction is over policing sports practices in our parks? And the reason I bring this up is I live right next to Berry Grove Park and time and time again, I see outside sports teams from government, or neighboring cities practicing on our, on our parks. And to me, that's not fair to our local organizations that pay for those fees to maintain our parks. So I'd like to know, or if someone could look into who goes around to the parks to make sure that neighboring cities are not practicing on our parks without paying some sort of due or however that's got to work out. So that's one thing I wanted to bring up this evening. The second item that I would like to bring up was actually reading the Series Courier a couple of weeks ago and I came across the story where Mr. Parsons was expressing his displeasure with the council or the city for being passed up multiple times on business opportunities. And one thing I'd like to maybe propose, and again, I haven't done too much research, but from what I have seen, there is no program in place for what they call a locus, excuse me, local business preference program. And I know larger cities have adopted these programs such as San Francisco, San Diego. I find these programs to be extremely benefit, beneficial to cities. So for example, those that aren't familiar with local business preference programs, if you have a local business who has registered with their city as meeting qualifications as either employing a certain amount of employees that live within the city or district areas, they can qualify as receiving 5% preference on bids or service requests. And I think for people like Mr. Parsons and other businesses throughout the city, that would be extremely beneficial for everybody if we can maybe look into adopting programs such as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Wells, as far as the sports practices and out-of-town uses, that I don't think we have anything in place currently.
It's on a complaint-driven process. My recreation department would receive that complaint and respond to it. It's the first I've heard of that type of complaint, so we can look into it. Generally, outside groups are the competitive groups, which are generally made up at least some component of, of Series residents. A lot of the travel soccer, you know, may be a, a program that is made up of, you know, numerous different communities and they may find a location that's in the middle to practice. So if they have four team members from Series, is that a local group or not? So some of those get to be challenging, but you know, if they have an Ajax, I'll use the Modesto competitive soccer as the, the team umbrella, but they have six students, you know, six players from Series, that gets to be some of the challenge. But we don't have any formal written rules on the use of our parks, that they are community assets and, but you know, there are some parks that are rented, those type of things. We do balance those, we do look at them, but again, it's on a complaint, complaint-driven process, so here the complaint, there at Berry Grove, we'll go take a look and see if we can find something that's going on there and we'll go from there.
Well, he brings up a very valid point. Let's say we have a number of out-of-town users that are pretty hard on the fields, you know, running up and down. Maybe we should explore something where they have to register with the city.
Well, at River Bluff, that's 100% controlled, so we control the access at River Bluff because all the fields are, are controlled, same at Costa. So those fields, you know, are, call our higher-end fields are already 100% controlled, so there's not an issue there. Most of these at our neighborhood parks, which are kind of built for the use that they give, so it's, it's not, you know, the, the level of maintenance and design of those parks is not, really not going to be hindered overly significantly by, you know, excessive use. It's kind of what they were built for.
What's the council want to, to see on, on something like this?
Push my button.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yeah, I think we dealt with this about 2009, 2010, you know, as soon as you saw baseball, softball, they have a card that they have to show when they use the schools because again, there's this connection that we have, I believe, with the school district.
But the school is different because we have a use agreement in place with the schools.
Right, right.
We already have a joint use agreement between those two. So maybe the easier way is just to go into discussion.
One, one thing, before we go too far in this discussion, because we really can't talk about this because we haven't agendized it yet, so perhaps I could make a suggestion that we have staff bring us some suggestion alternatives that we can agendize so that we can have a rich discussion with all people that might want to be involved because I don't want this to go too far off in a tangent. We could, we could craft it right now, but that wouldn't be legal, so, okay?
We don't have our attorney here anyway, so that's probably.
He's out ill and a replacement was supposed to be trying to get here, but.
Okay.
He is attempting to be here.
So, so if you could, you know, look into that and, and bring us back, you know, a date when you would like to, to.
Yeah, we'd like to do a little research to find out the extent of the problem and be able to give a comprehensive look. Because if it's, if it's just one park and one issue, then we deal with that particular issue. If it is more comprehensive of an issue, then obviously it's a little, little bigger analysis.
And then on the local business preference, I think we'll probably talk about that a little bit later.
We actually already have that. We already have local business preference, it's already in our purchasing ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, if you want it to be expanded.
We may want to address that to expand.
We already have one.
Okay. Yeah, and that, I'm glad you identified, we do, we do have that. You want to address it now or later?
Well, I mean, normally it's at the end, right?
Yeah, we'll address it at the end then, that's fine. All right. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Renee Ledbetter from the Series Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to ask you to save the date for Friday, March 11th. We will have our Series Legislative Day at the Howard Training Center. It'll be a legislative breakfast and we'll be bringing together our, our state, federal, and Assembly legislators as well as, I know Mayor's not going to be there, but Vice Mayor Klein, and I believe Mr. DiMartini will be there as well. So we'll get our legislative perspective and it's Friday, March 11th. I think Casey has it on your calendar, so, okay. So just wanted to ask you all to save the date for that. It's a free breakfast, you can register online at serieschamber.com. We just need that for food count, but it's free, so, thank you.
Thank you. You don't want to speak, Mo Hinder? No? Okay. Okay. We will, oh, he marked on here, I do want which to speak, okay. Sorry. All right, with that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or one discussion item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience? Okay, I will bring it back to the council or actually, at this point, do I need a motion for?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You want us to do like?
Well, we have a motion in a second and then I'll have her give it to me.
Okay, all right. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, can we have the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein is absent. Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes for 01.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing and no new business. We have one discussion item, Centennial Celebration Committee Discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor Vieira. Relatively simple item this evening, just recognizing that February 25th, 1918 is when the city was founded officially incorporated in the state of California as a city. So we are nearing that 100-year celebration. We've already began to receive a number of different inquiries from different groups that want to help us in that celebration. So everything from the Elm Foundation to local sculptors, to folks who wouldn't give some plants, who want to help, who wants to give some money, there's kind of a list of folks who are kind of accumulating at this point. So I wanted to bring it to the council's attention as soon as possible, just kind of get your ideas, thoughts of how you would like to approach that. It's not a pressing need, obviously, it's almost two years away, however, or over two years away, however, we kind of need to get started if we do want to have a celebration. And generally speaking, other cities that I've spoke to who have done this, you know, they recommend getting a committee together at least a year in advance, a year and a half is better, start meeting kind of on a quarterly basis, ramp that up to kind of monthly, you know, so that by the time that it comes, you're ready for it and covered every base. So figured it was appropriate time to just kind of kick the ideas around, who you would like to see, kind of, is there a particular body that you'd like to see run? You know, we could have the planning commission run it, you could create a separate body, an ad hoc committee, we could, you know, put it in a newspaper, on a website. So it's, it's really kind of an open conversation, kind of looking for, really the two questions are, you know, the extent to the council would like to be involved in that committee, is there a particular budget number to kind of kick around if you'd like to see included in this next budget or probably wait till the following year budget and the 1718 budget would be the more appropriate place to put budget. So it's kind of an open conversation, just looking for some direction and then we can go tackle whatever council direction you'd like to give us.
You know, what I think would be a great idea to do is get our service clubs involved, be a part of that committee, I think that would be wonderful, obviously the chamber, different business folks and, you know, maybe, maybe somebody from this body here too, but I think you'll get a lot more participation, you may get, you know, clubs to donate and that sort of thing for the event itself too. So I, I think that would be a great start, to start over there. You know, I know we got time, but certainly, I, I would think that would be a way we'd want to go, along with, you know, citizens, I mean, how big do we want the committee? You know, I, I guess that's another question.
That's really the question I'm asking the council, looking for your direction. I mean, obviously, 100 people on a committee is a little unwieldy, you know, but something in the, you know, 20, 25 range, as long as you've got some strong leadership, you know, I think council member at least would be.
I think we should have an ad hoc of, for a, of a couple of the council members. I'm thinking that perhaps we advertise and if we want to get, say, 20 people that, and, you know, the service clubs could be there, an add or two that.
Right.
I mean, who knows, maybe we'll have five people that are interested or we might have 35, I don't know. But I, I don't want to exclude anybody that wants to submit and have some interest in it, so why don't we, why don't we look to put something in the courier that is seeking input and/or joining the committee and then we'll, we'll gauge interest that way and decide where we go, if that works for everyone.
That sounds great.
How about when we meet with the school district and we do our little thing together that maybe we invite them to, because again, they're going to have a great connection to the students.
Yep.
And it's going to become one of those things where you're, you know, you're touching thousands of, of young individuals, so.
Perhaps they can also do a, an ad hoc to their board members, so.
That's what I was looking for. And so what we'll do is we'll put a little schedule together, put it on our city's website in the Courier, get that schedule as information item back to you as council, and we'll, we'll see what kind of interests we have and we'll bring back that interest and start forming the process and laying out the framework.
Okay. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, I'd like to see the city council during, it's February, right? The meetings in February dressed in the period costume. You, you may or may not want that, I don't know, but it seems to me, if you're the leaders of the city, you should be dressed as the leaders of the city we're dressed back in 1918, was it? Yeah. Sounds to me like this would be an opportunity.
Can we even find clothes like that?
Huh?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sure you could go to Stan State, to MJC, to some of these high schools that have drama deals and they could work you up, each a costume of the period. But I think it would be, it would be something that you could understand then how those people dressed and maybe the way they felt. And that would be something that, that's just an idea, but I think you'd all look kind of dashing in the period costume, so.
Well, that's a great idea for the guys, but not for me in the corset.
Well, Linda, I guess you could fake it.
Who would know, right?
That's right.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, with that, we will move to council member referrals. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? I think, Councilmember Lane, you had something you wanted to go over?
Yeah, going back to local businesses, you know, I know we have something in place, like Toby said. I don't know how well it's working and I think it's something that we need to revisit. I think it needs to be brought back for a discussion item. And I think, I think what I'd like to see is, you know, the contractual amounts, the dollar amounts, how are we going through that process? Are we, are we, you know, reaching out and doing it or are we saying, well, we can get it cheaper somewhere else? I, I think that's, you know, my deal is, is, you know, Renee, you've done one heck of a job with this campaign of, you know, shop local. And, you know, I think people are and, but the city needs to do that too. If, if we can do that, we need to do that along with the city, along with, you know, I can't speak for the school district, but they should be, along with different sporting organizations in this town. They should be if they can, you know, if we're, we're looking at Home Depot, you know, bigger ticket items, are we doing that for maintenance? I, I just think we need to revisit it, just so we can get it, and Toby, I'm not saying that we're not doing it, right, but I think it needs to be revisited and brought back here to this council to see what our guidelines are. And, you know, what I'm, what I'm really looking for is, you know, I want to see what we're buying locally. I want to know what the guidelines are for each department and what that dollar amount is.
Okay, so we have an existing purchasing ordinance that is documented in policy, so you would like to see a review of that policy?
Yes, please, yes.
As well as what is currently being spent?
That would be good to see that too.
So can I have some parameters of, I mean, past six months over a budget year?
I think over this last budget year would be significant enough to see where we're at, right? I don't want them to go into.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I.
The guidelines.
I'll make my comments after yours, but.
Okay, well, I think the guidelines are, are really what I'm interested in and I want to know what those dollar amounts are.
So really simply, the dollar amounts are $2,000. Anything under $2,000 is really at the department level, does not require multiple bids.
Right.
Anything above $2,000 requires multiple bids and, and the requirement for local is inside of those. And again, those are purchases, remember, if we're contracting for services, that's a different versus public works contracts, which is completely outside of this, we cannot have a local preference in a public works contract, so there's multiple layers to that conversation.
Correct. Now, I'm talking about the guidelines that we're referring to, shopping locally.
Yep.
Right, if it's $2,000, we may want to revisit that, maybe it's not enough, maybe we need to increase it, maybe, you know, I, I just want to know what we're doing locally because, you know, I've not only heard from, from Mr. Parsons and Renee and, and Mr. Sanford Beck, I've heard it all over town.
So here's the.
Since this article came out and since it's been talked about, I think it's important to this community.
So here's the general rule of thumb, how we do the purchasing, just as a, as a big picture, just everyone needs to hear this. We look at purchasing as a three-legged stool. So there's three critical components to any purchase. One, we want the best product for the best price, purchase locally. That's the trifecta, right? We get all three of those, we made the perfect purchase. Is that always possible? Unfortunately not. Generally speaking, staff, considerers, the local, but when, when you're giving up something else, staff has been driven into this cost perspective that the value trumps, and that's where the difficulty is, how much value do we place on a local purchase over those other? And that's where the art of this comes into play, so.
I think, I think that's a great discussion to have, you know, I don't know what that is, but certainly, I think we need to discuss it openly and I'd invite those who are, have interest in that, that will certainly be agendized and, and, you know, have an open discussion about it because I, obviously, from what I've heard from different folks, we're not doing a really good job at that. So if we can do better, maybe we can. But if we can do better, I certainly think that we need to revisit it and look at it, in my opinion.
And I, I, the way I kind of look at this is not so much, you know, what are we doing wrong or how come we're not doing that, although some might see it that way. I want to look at it as, where are there more opportunities for us to purchase more stuff locally? And I might suggest that we have an ad hoc committee of a couple of people here that sits with staff and not looks and says, why didn't you purchase this here? Because I think the message is getting out there. But I think what we, taking a different approach maybe, it says, why don't we get a listing of all of our businesses in town and what they do and see where there might be opportunities to engage those businesses with purchases that we have or upcoming purchases that we have? For example, if, and, and again, I may be way off because I don't know the answer to this, but if we're buying, you know, toiletries for this facility from somebody that's in Modesto, perhaps we should see what their pricing is and go to Home Depot, for example, and say, what type of pricing could you give us on these same types of services? And look at it that way. And I know we, we probably do that to a certain extent, but ideally, I'd love to get to a point where we said, you know what, we had 30% of our purchases last year were made within, you know, a five-mile radius of the city and, and our goal is we want to get to 40% of that next year. We may not get there, but I agree with Councilmember Lane when, when I, when, I know things must not be working real well because when we hear so many different people say, that was a great article, yeah, I'm not seeing any business either, or it's, it tells me that we need to do a better job of that. And it's not saying that it is blaming anyone, it's just how can we to, how can we look at doing more locally? And, and I think it's important that, that we do that. So I would suggest that potentially there be an ad hoc committee of a couple of the council members that look at and help craft this thing because I guess we're doing some, but what other things could we look to, you know, I want to say, copy from other jurisdictions that have implemented this? I, I heard some. I, I, I heard some, some great ideas from Mr. Stamper as far as some of the things other communities are doing. And, and when we, when we get to a point, you always know that you're successful. When you get to a point, it's like the referee where you never hear about the bad call, they just do a great job and, and nobody ever says, it's great. They just don't complain. I, I think right now we have a situation where we can do a better job of, of local purchases, because so many people were glad the article was written, and that's really not where we want to be, so.
Yeah.
Beat you.
Councilmember Drossit?
I'll, I'll wait for you because you had your thought, I have it written down.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks a lot, I just forgot my thought. You know, I think too, you know, when you're talking about, you know, we talked about the three things that you got to do, right? Buy locally, but, you know, is it in that price range? Maybe, you know, I, I think the ad hocks a great idea, too, by the way, but I think we need to set some guidelines for them to look at as a ha- ad hoc committee from what we do from here, right? I, I, I'm thinking that'll help, you know, instead of getting in the room and just throwing stuff all over. But what I was thinking about was, you know, maybe a five percent preference for buying locally. You know, maybe it is five percent cheaper on the, on the, and I'm just talking out loud, these are some of the things I want to talk about. I think we should be talking about, you know, because it's five percent less online for the same thing. Well, you know, if we can get it for N-Series and it's five percent more, and may not always be the case, but we should maybe talk about some of those preferences, too. That's kind of what I want to talk about. How can we, you know, support our local business and, you know, ad hoc, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great idea, because I think there's a whole lot more input there. But I think if we were able to kind of look at it as a whole and then say, hey, let's put an ad hoc committee. These are the things we want to see.
Sure.
Right, and go from there, anyway, sorry.
No, you're good. You know, the ad hoc committee is good, I think anything we do is good. You know, the, the only thing is, I, I don't want us to sit there and think, okay, well, we use Home Depot as an example, right? And, and again, we may have to go out there and nudge them and say, you know, these things are, that, that we can do or that we're doing. But I, I see it as, okay, we, there was a contract, or there was an opportunity, the city put it on their website, they sent flyers. They say, hey, listen, we're in, we're in the possible need of these things. Somebody can come and say, okay, yeah, you know, I'd, I'd like to offer that to you. And I understand what, what you're saying in regards to, maybe we have to go there. I just use the example, today we started softball at the high school and, and we've had five meetings, and the girl shows up today and she says, well, I didn't know we were starting today. And so, I mean, it's kind of like, okay, well, we have these things, and again, maybe that committee, if you understand analogy, in, in my mind, I see it. And, and we're kind of reaching out there, you know? It's, uh, what I'd like to know is how much of that dollar comes back? So if for some reason, you know, again, not, you don't do it today, because you might not know that, that, that total. But if the people are spending the money here locally and it comes back to the city, obviously it's going to by, you know, certain services that we have.
That number is known.
What is it?
Percentage.
What is the percentage?
I, I've heard it, I don't know, but it's, it's pretty high.
The other part, too, is I don't think we got to recreate the will. I think that, you know, there's other cities, you know, you work for Livermore Correct or Turlock, or, or what are some other cities doing that we could actually try to pick a play out of and, and, and use ourselves here? But anyways, that's all I got.
So I guess the question is, you don't want an ad hoc committee, you want staff just to bring something back?
Well, I think it would be good if we just had that discussion before, we said, hey, let's get an ad hoc committee and let them go discuss some, discuss something that maybe this whole council has agreed upon, they spend all that time. You know, give them some guidelines, you know, talk about it, maybe give them some guidelines and let them run with it and then bring their, their objectives or opinions back to us.
Is that doable? Well, from my perspective, I think it would be better for us to bring you information first.
I agree.
Give you as much data as we possibly can get to give you the framework with some of the answers to the questions that you've already asked before we kind of get into that level, because we may, we may have the answer y'all need. I mean, one of those specifically, you're talking about what do other cities do? For cities of our size in the fifty thousand range, recognize we're still a very, we'll call it efficient organization. Most cities in this threshold start to have an actual procurement officer. It's a separate department that that's their only job is this, and we don't have that. We have this job spread out across the departments. So, you know, you, you're looking at best practices of what other cities are doing, that's one of the best practices. And we're, we're nearing that size of a city where it becomes valuable if you really want to see. And see, and one of the things you mentioned is measure, right? If you want to set a particular goal and measure that, that requires a significant amount of tracking and work for both the finance department and the individual departments to produce both sides of that equation, which is, hey, this is what we're currently doing and this is what we, where we'd like to be. Takes, that takes time. So I, again, from my perspective, let me bring you information and then you can provide direction based on the information of what, what we currently have.
Okay. Councilmember Drossit?
Yeah, just one last, you know, the number one employer in, in this, in the city is what, do we know?
City, the school district.
School district.
Yeah.
And how much does school district shop first? Do, do, do you know Renee, off the top of your head? Because I, I think they'd be one of those individuals or groups that we'd have to also have at the table in order to, you know, encourage them and to see what they're doing, and I think that'd be important.
Sure. Does she make two comments, Mayor?
We can definitely survey our businesses through some of the online tools that we have. So if there are specific questions that staff would like to ask that we could go out to chamber members, as well as some who are not chamber members but are on our mailing list, we can do that. As well as, one of the things that we should look at are online sales versus brick and mortar. How much are we, how, how much are we losing and what that means to us? Because I know, you know, a lot of our local stores don't have an online presence. Unfortunately, that's the way many people tend to shop. And then how much of that in sales tax do we actually recapture? So I think that's some information that we would like to know in terms of where does that sales tax go? Does it go where the company is, does it come back here? And I think Toby and I have kind of had that discussion, but it's still kind of confusing. So I think having that clarity for some people so that they understand where their sales tax is going online would be helpful, too.
Okay. And I, I think one, go ahead.
Just so you understand, I'm done, a little, you want me there?
Please. Because, so we can get it on record.
The video doesn't pick it up unless you're at the microphone.
Shane Parsons. Anyway, if money is spent locally, sixty-four cents of every dollar spent comes back to the community. When you talk about big box stores and, and nothing against the Walmarts and that, thirteen cents stays in your community and gets spent again. And we're not talking tax-based. Those taxes could be, get paid several times out of that sixty-four cents. So thirteen cents does it that way. Online, zero gets spent back in your city. So those numbers, you know, reflect why we need to shop local. Maybe, maybe it needs to be a, and I certainly, you know, I, I just want to be acknowledged. I mean, I'm looking for all businesses, not just for me, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's a bigger number than I thought. I'll just give you a little bit of.
Sure. Okay. And I, and I think probably as a first start, a lot of the business just want to know that they're given an opportunity to, to, to give a bid on, on some of that and don't necessarily get overlooked, so. So Mr. Wells, can you get some numbers together for us? Maybe, you know, once again outline what our current policy is and, and, and then ultimately we can evolve to what other jurisdictions might be doing that we want to adopt?
Of course.
Okay.
Their particular timeframe, let's say for. Well, the more data you want, the more, more time we need. So if, if you're only looking for, you know, six months' worth of data, then it's a little short of time. But if you want a full fiscal year worth of analysis, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time. I, I would recommend using last year's fiscal now, data, just because that's completed and audited and that's, it may not be the most reflective snapshot, it's just a cleaner data set.
I would say just whatever's cleanest, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever's the cleanest.
Yeah.
Suzanne, any thoughts on, on that data, using the fiscal year fourteen, fifteen is kind of what I was thinking, just use that fiscal year?
Yes, it's going to be very time-intensive, because we're going to have to export it out of our accounts payable system and then sort it by that. A lot of our local purchases are made on our Visa card, so that's going to require somebody going back into the actual file from what we paid it for and identifying where local businesses were used. We use Ace Hardware and Home Depot a lot, but they use their Visa cards for those, so it's not split out to the vendor. So it's going to be rather labor-intensive to get that information.
Something that the credit card company couldn't provide, how much was spent by vendor?
I don't, I don't know, I've never had to ask them for that type of report. There may be something within their system that will give us that, but I haven't seen it. Because no one's asked for that level of detail, but we have it, we just would have to compile it.
Okay.
Yeah, you're talking, you know, of thirty or forty Visa cards per month, and that's, that's on a light month.
My, the, my question would be, what is that information going to tell us?
Going to tell you that baseline number.
It's not going to tell us how much we didn't spend.
It's telling you what we have spent locally.
Well, if I want to do that, I'll just go to Walmart or Home Depot and ask me, tell me how much got spent by the city of series.
But that's, doesn't capture all the, I mean, there, there's multiple purchasing levels. What I'm saying is, for, for a maintenance worker who needs something from Ace Hardware, he's taking his credit card and going buying that. But if there's a different level of purchase, he may be using a purchase order going to buy that same thing, depending on what it is. But there are a lot of those purchases that are made on a credit card, that getting that data is, for us to get it, is going to take some time.
No, I understand, but let's say hypothetically, you got that information, what am I going to do with it? I mean.
Well, you asked, you'd asked for a goal-driven process and you wanted to know what we're currently spending on local vendors.
No, I know, but, but that doesn't tell me whether a hundred percent of that purchase was local or was somewhere else. It's just telling me what the number is.
But that's what we would call all of that data, so we would have both that information. We'd give you that information of what we're spending locally and what we're not spending locally, so you'd have both sets of data.
Well, let me ask this, do we know the vendors locally that we buy from?
Of course.
Yes.
So that would kind of make it easier, right, to draw just from those particular vendors?
Right, and for, most of the local purchases are made on our Visa cards, so it's just a matter of pulling those out and, and getting it. Because my accounts payable clerk does not enter which vendor they're buying from on the Visa, she enters what they're buying when they make their Visa purchases. So I can tell you that Home Depot, Ace Hardware, Walmart, Costco is a big public safety. They spend a lot of money at Costco for their supplies, in particular fire. And then there's a little bit of purchasing that costs less, but they don't take credit cards, so they do most of their purchases there with the petty cash. So, and then a lot of the food purchases and things like that, they're all done at the local stores here, the grocery stores.
Well, again, let us, let us see what we can come up with, and if, if it's going to take too much time, then we'll, obviously we'll come back and request some more time.
I would need at least two meetings from now, because I have three very large projects I'm currently working on for the next meeting.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yeah, I'm just trying to gather all this. Wouldn't it be easier if we just had asked our employees, did you purchase anything outside of the city over the last year? I, I'm saying, you know, within that two thousand dollar range, because that's what we're talking about, correct? Is the two thousand dollars for, kind of, or I mean, maybe we're also talking about something you might go buy at, maybe not the mall, but.
The answer is yes, of course we have, they all have.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but if you want to measure it.
Right.
We got to get the real data. I mean, we can make speculation all day long of what that is by asking employees, but you're asking for data, so let us give you some real data. That's real, measurable, so that we have something we can compare to to move forward. Because otherwise, we're, we're going to spin our wheels and we're going to, we might feel good or feel, but let's have some data we can compare it to. And if we're able to find better information through our credit card company, then we will. If we need to change credit card companies, maybe that's something we need to do. But look, let us give you some real data, because otherwise, we're, we're just wasting our time.
Before we guess, why don't you bring us back the data, we'll look and see whether it's meaningful or worthless.
Yep.
So, and then we can go from there.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Anything else, any other council member would like to see on a future agenda? Okay, reports at this time, I have nothing to report.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Dean? Mr. Wells?
Just a couple of quick update items. One, Measure H Committee meets this Wednesday. They will be reviewing the financials for last year and signing off, hopefully signing off on the audit for last year's Measure H expenditures. Just a reminder, next Monday, the fifteenth, is President's Day holiday, City Hall will be closed. Stan Cog Policy Board is meeting next Wednesday, that'd be the seventeenth. Again, the ongoing conversation regarding the half-cent sales tax and the sales tax expenditure continues to gain some steam and will be coming back to you as the council to discuss kind of our local expenditure plan, and that will be a joint effort with Stan Cog, so that will be coming in February or March as well. And just on another note, I attended the city manager's conference down in Southern California this past week with some really interesting stuff, and one of the big focuses is transportation at the statewide level. And that, that issue continues to get more and more dire, I just cannot say it loud enough of what's happening with the gas tax and its lack of strength is going to be a fundamental flaw in California infrastructure. It, it just, you can't stress it enough how, what today's funding of gas tax, how insufficient it is. The numbers they were throwing out, if you think back thirty years ago, everyone was driving a car that had basically roughly the same gas mileage. And today, you have a range of gas mileage from eight miles to the gallon to infinity miles to the gallon, and those cars are paying zero to pay for those roads. Those would be your electric vehicles and everything in between. And that funding gap, as people continue to drive more and more miles, the, the power that the gas tax has continues to diminish. You've got this diverging graph and it is going to, it's already hitting us on a local level as our gas tax continues to fall every year. So we're trying to do the same old mantra, try to do more with less, and it's flat, not going to work. At the statewide level, it is in crisis and unfortunately, state is not recognizing it yet. So we will be trying to put some information together of what the state's lack of effort will mean to us, because it will be significant to our region already. The CTC, California Transportation Commission, just removed seven hundred and fifty-four million dollars in funding because of the change in forecast of the gas tax, which is four projects here locally that will lose funding pretty significantly. They're, they're mostly in the Stanislaus County area of funding, but you're talking about thirty or forty million dollars worth of our region and will just be cut, and those projects would not be able to move forward. Big, big issue, sorry to be a Debbie Downer there, but that's an issue that is just continuing to get worse and worse and the, the state is pretty much at loggerheads and are not, not budgeting at this point.
Mr. Westbrook?
Well, I'm going to bring you back up. January twenty-eighth, city had the first community workshop for the general plan update. I was very encouraged and excited about the participation that we had. Fifty-five people attended that, thanks to some of the staff who helped facilitate that. I think the discussion was well-received, the dialogue from the consultant and also the feedback that we got from the community. So very encouraged that we had that level of participation at the first workshop, and so it was very exciting. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that I'm going around doing some road shows about the general plan. I do have a couple of, you know, speaking engagements coming up. And then Lourdes Perez from the Partnership for Healthy Children contacted staff and said, hey, we attended the workshop, the public workshop. We'd love it if you could do something like that, that was for the Spanish-speaking audience. And so I've set that up for the eleventh of March at nine o'clock in the morning. And so I'm trying to work on the mechanics of that, because my Spanish is extremely limited, but the partnership is going to help us with the translation and so forth. So we'll be getting kind of that segment of the community to be able to participate and engage in the discussion. So I'm very excited with the process to date for the general plan.
Great. Mr. Jordan? Mr. Smith? Mr. Collins? Mr. Britton? Mr. Thomas? Nope. Supervisor DiMartini? All right, well, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, February twenty-second.